Call the meeting to order. Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, please call world three.
Councilmember Canfield?
Here.
Councilmember Chambers?
Here.
Councilmember Phillips?
Here.
Councilmember Salisbury Delisantson? Mayor DeBoer?
I'm here. I'll look for motion to approve Jim Delisantson's.
I make a motion that we approve Jim Dean and his actions. I support it.
Sue?
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salisbury Delisantson? Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Okay, and before we do the consent agenda, I want to turn it over to Mike Burns for recognition of the staff and community for the flood.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I felt with the efforts that we had with the flood efforts that we had last week, I thought it was important that we recognize our city staff and along with many different agencies that helped us throughout the entire flood event. We had a four largest flood in city of old history and I can say from where I sit, it was because of the efforts that every one of them did, it really made my job that much easier. So I just felt it was appropriate. I wanted to thank all the different city staff that was here, starting with the Department of Public Works. I want to publicly recognize their assistant city manager, Richland Bombard, along with his staff, which includes Jeff Van Setters, Todd Phillips, Scott Fosberg, so Ralph Bracken was here, and Joe Baker as well. And also, I wanted to thank Sue Az for the assistance with Mark Munt and Brian Vander Buehlund, and I know Cody Chambers started the day after the flood, but they worked very hard and we all worked very well together during the whole event and a lot of things had to happen in order to make that event as well. I also want to thank Chief Ron Van Overbeek from the Lowell Area Fire Department, along with Captain Shannon Witherall. Captain Witherall managed this event during the weekend and their staff did an excellent job. Also want to thank the Lowell Police Department. They worked countless hours. We had extra patrols and first people here tonight is obviously Chief Bugala. Detective Scott Van Solcom worked a number of hours. Ian Shears worked many shifts. Andy Cokera did as well, and I wanted to thank all of them for their efforts. One other entity that I felt was important to recognize was Fromm. Fromm helped us with a lot of the relief efforts with the cleanup. The, we didn't have to do sheltering, but they were ready to do that. Meals for people that were in need between them and the Lowell United Methodist Church. So I want to thank, I want to thank Don Brony from Fromm, along with Pastor Brad Brillhart, and I hope I get this right, Andy Demick from Lowell United Methodist Church. I just wanted to thank everyone for their efforts. It was, as I said earlier, it was because everyone did so well, it made my job that much easier. So I thank everyone for their efforts.
Good. All right, I will look for a motion now to approve the consent agenda for tonight.
Go move.
I'll second.
Discussion or changes. Sue?
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salisbury Delisantson? Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
And Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
All right, now, citizen count, I think it was not on the agenda tonight.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. My name is Scott Noddo. I live in Walker with my wife Nicole and three boys, and I am running for Kent County Circuit Court this year. As some of you may know, the judiciary in the state of Michigan is nonpartisan, and this year there are two openings on the court as a result of two retirements of some, two longstanding judges. So that gives us the opportunity to make an effort to get elected, to work hard to introduce ourselves to the citizens of Kent County. It's a big county, so I'm trying to get around and meet everybody. A little bit about my background. I grew up in Kent County, Wyoming, Big Zat. I started practicing law when I graduated from law school in 2005, and I practiced in a wide variety of areas. I've been a prosecutor. I've done business disputes, real property disputes, a pretty broad-based experience. And that also includes, it's been about 13 years I've been practicing law. That also includes four years spent active duty in United States Army Jed Corps, where I prosecuted court marshals and a bunch of other army-related and military-related legal matters. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. It's a pleasure to make my introduction to the community and to the council. I thank you for the opportunity to speak, and that's all I have subject to any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody that's, all right, old business is empty. Move on to new business. 680 LARA DNR grant. This is for public input. You can go podium, name an address, and then they'll make a decision at the next lower board, if you're correct.
Yes, Dave Austin's here tonight. He can speak.
Okay.
Thank you, Dave Austin with Williams Works, and I'm serving as the engineer for the Lowell Area Recreation Authority. Tonight, this is an opportunity to seek public input on the MDR grant that is being submitted by the city and separate equal grant by the Lowell Area Recreation Authority towards partial funding for a potential project to connect the two rail trail endpoints that are in the community. And Sue is going to put that map up here in a second. The purpose of the meeting again is to educate the folks on quickly on what the project is and then to seek public input on that. There are a lot of questions that have come up about this, and to facilitate that, we put together a frequently asked questions list. There are several copies outside on your way out today. You can also access them online at lowlareatrailway.org. It covers a lot of the questions. Purpose of the trail. This is a map of 125-mile rail trail system that starts in Owasso to the east, goes through St. John's, Ionia, Sarnac, and terminates in Lowell at South Division on Grand River, just south of the Grand River where the bridge is at. And it picks up again on Foreman Street, that's next to Metric Manufacturing. It precedes north to Belvinge, to Greedville, and then east to Alma. So the only gap in the entire 125-mile section is here through Lowell, and that's a good thing because the reason we don't have a rail gap is we have a thriving business here in the community that still uses the rail. So we don't have an abandoned rail, but as such, we had to look at different ways to connect those two rail trail endpoints. When completed, this will be the fifth largest continuous rail trail in the country. So back in 2015, you may recall, excuse me, in 13, the DNR and the National Park Service did a master plan of this entire route to look at how they would complete it, and at that time, they identified Lowell as a hub community in the trailway system. Then in 2015, the DNR helped fund a study to look at options for connecting these two points because we don't have an abandoned rail, so we had to look at ways of getting from Foreman Street down to South Division. So that study was done and looked at a lot of different options. And Sue, if you can go to the next slide, please, I'll start to talk about that. So this is a map showing the proposed route as it exists today, and we'll start up on the, right there in the center on the top is Foreman Street. That red dot is where the existing trail ends right now that goes to Belvinge. The existing Lara Trail goes down Foreman Street and connects to G Drive, goes down G Drive, and then at that point it gets to Alden Nash, and as you know, it goes all the way to the high school and the Wittenbach Weggie Nature Center to the north. And to the south, we've started the construction, will be completed this spring, to go from G Drive to Main Street on Alden Nash. And that's where we start this new proposed project. So I'm going to work from left to right and walk you through these sections real quick. The first section, they're all numbered, is to get from Main Street to the new township park, and there's an existing sidewalk there that will be widened next to Walgreens. And then with the cooperation of Lowell Township, we're going to go into their brand-new park that's going to be completed this year, and you'll be able to then connect to their facilities there, including the new bridge that they're putting over the Grand River. From there, we're going to head east on private property through Section 2. We'll get off of Bo's Road, and we're going to go through private property for a while and get down away from the street, and eventually go back up to the west side of the water plant, back up onto the street. Right now, we're showing two potential routes around the water plant. One is to go in front of it, which would require moving some things, and then that little purplish route to the south would be an alternate route that is being contemplated as perhaps going behind it if we had to. Section 4 is the coolest part, I think, right now, and that is putting the trail through Stony Lakeside Park. So in addition to regional trail riders using this as a way to get from A to B, we'll be able now to go to Stony Lakeside Park and have a paved path that will get us to each of the amenities in that park, including the dog park, the skate park, the new playground, the restroom, the beach, the picnic shelter, et cetera. And so that will give us, even if you're just using it locally, it'll give you a nice pathway to get through that park. After Stony Lakeside Park, we'll be back up onto the street, and we'll be replacing the proposal is to replace the existing sidewalk on Bo's Road from Pleasant Street to Hudson, and I'll talk about that in a little more detail in a second. That'll be in the road right of way in front of folks' houses. We have a brand-new light coming in as a part of the South Broadway Street project at Hudson and Bo's, so they're going to be able to have a protected crossing there at that intersection. Without that light, we would not be able to use that crossing. And then, right now, we're calling it the fairgrounds. This project won't happen for a couple of years, but the proposal is that somehow we would get across what we call now the fairgrounds. The green line that's going directly east and west assumes that maybe if the fairgrounds moves, or when they move, that we would be able to have a more direct route to get to the Flat River. Otherwise, there's a roundabout way to get to where we want to go. Where we want to go is we need to cross the Flat River. You've heard me say in previous presentations that in order to get from A to B on this study, we had to cross M-21, we have to cross Hudson, we have to cross the Flat River, and we have to cross the Grand River. And so here, we've talked about for years, and I've heard folks before me, and the way Jim Hall used to talk about it all the time, and how we might use those islands that are in the lower Flat River. So this project proposes that we would build a bridge that would connect to those islands and then continue to connect east to what we call the Moose Rogers Property. So technically not a park, but it's owned by the city there, east of the Flat River. And there, we join up with and coexist with the North Country Trail, which is the blue line here. The North Country Trail goes to that property now. We would anticipate crossing that in an east-to-west fashion and also providing a loop or a leg or a spur up to the north so we could get to Front Street. One of the important parts of this project is to connect to the downtown area. So by connecting to Front Street, we are now on streets that have sidewalks, and we're only a couple of blocks away from the ice cream parlor, from the brewery, and all of the other facilities on Main Street. Then we would continue south, and now we've got to cross the Grand River. The existing bridge there is not wide enough for us to use to coexist with the bicycles, walkers, and traffic, so we'd have another pedestrian bridge to come back across, and then about a 600, 700-foot section to get to where the rail trail has been abandoned there, in that lower right-hand corner. So those are a lot of different components, and I mentioned, for the most part, we are out of the way of people's properties, but particularly on the east side of Bo's Road, we are putting a trail, and these trails have to be 10-foot wide in an area where we have 5-foot sidewalks, and we just physically don't have room to put that in there without asking permission, whether it's a foot or five feet. Every property's different. So we would have to talk to those folks and seek their permission to allow that to happen. We've only had some preliminary discussions with a couple of property owners, but every property owner would be contacted and opportunity to talk to them about that. I wanted to state on behalf of Lara that this isn't a water main, a sewer line, a power line, or a highway, a facility that's such that we would anticipate seeking condemnation-type proceedings in order to make it happen. This is a public fund facility, and it's not the intent of Lara to go down that road. So what we're hoping to do is at least just open up the floor for conversation with folks, and hopefully we can work out a win-win situation with everyone. But if not, you know, we'll look at other options. So we've not, again, if you're here tonight and your property's impacted, I'd be happy to talk to you directly about it, but we will be contacting everyone that's adjacent to it. Funding for the project is about $4.9 to $5 million project total, and the big part of that are those bridges, of course. We're seeking 70% to 80% grant fundings from that through the MDOT and three DNR sources with the balance coming from private foundations primarily outside of the Lowell area. Lara wanted to make sure we understand that we aren't seeking a big public financing campaign here locally. Lara's very proud that they did Phase 1 without raising any tax dollars. The local foundations did contribute, but this is really a regional trail, and so we're seeking most of the funding on a regional statewide basis. There'll be opportunities for local contributions to things like benches or trees, you know, smaller ticket items, but we're not going to be asking the Lowell community to fund a large deployment of this. The reason we're doing this now, it takes a long time to get in this grant process and get in the queue, so the monies aren't even available right now. So if we apply to MDOT, this is at best a 2020 project, so it's not something that's going to happen right away, but all of a sudden, it's 2018, somewhere I lost a couple decades. There's plenty of opportunities in addition to tonight to provide input, but the grant applications go in April 1st for the DNR, so between now and then. We have tonight's meeting. I'm going to come back to council on March 19th and ask you to consider the resolution that will authorize the city to submit the application. So that'll just be a brief discussion there. On the 14th, Lara has its regular board meeting. It's in this building at 6 o'clock. Folks can attend that. And also, we've got an online input form. If you go to lowlareatrailway.org, you can just go online and give us all your comments or talk to me after the meeting, and I'll give you my cellphone or my address over on Lincoln Lake, and we can talk at any time. So with that, I encourage folks to come and give their input, and if council has any questions, we can address those as well.
Thanks, Dave. All right, anybody that wants to speak on the trail?
Jim Fowler, 810 Bo's Road. I've got a couple of points to make. First of all, I apologize for my lack of trust. I've lived on Bo's Road for 36 years, and a few years ago, met with engineers for Lowell Light and Power, and we were told there's going to be three trees removed. We had 150 removed when they put the power line out. So things change when the chainsaws start and when the bulldozers start and all of that. So I'm really reluctant to say, yeah, this is not going to impact me or it's going to be minimal impact because it's going to end up being more than what shows on paper. I'm curious of why Lara hasn't approached every one of the proposed property owners up to this point. I know there's going to be time in the future, but for a public hearing, I feel everybody should have been contacted. When I contacted my neighbors, do you know this is being discussed? No idea. So I feel there's a failing there. If the Lara Board can work with light and power to remove the telephone poles and put the line underground, I still don't want it in my front yard. I think spending $5 million to build four miles worth of trails in the city, whether it's city money, state money, DNR money, I think it's irresponsible when we can't maintain our streets. And it sends a bad message to the citizens that, yes, we're going to spend this money, but we can't maintain our streets. And the reconstruction of Bo's Road and Broadway Street, blocking it off at Main Street and putting a light at the end of Bo's Road, is going to create higher traffic counts on Bo's Road. And we've got a problem with speed on Bo's Road right now. In my opinion, it's going to increase the truck traffic on Bo's Road, and with a trail that close, I think it's going to, you know, cause problems. And I don't want more traffic on numbers than up there, right? Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
John Beatty, 680 Bo's, as of August, so I'm new to Lowell. I think it's a great town. I definitely did not know about any of this. I was approached by some neighbors. I don't feel too strong about it, and the reason for that is I am a mountain biker, and I have to travel through all sorts of towns to get to different trails. You know, I got to travel to ride. I understand the fact that they want to connect all the trails, but if you think about it, there's a lot of rail trails already existing. That's, in my opinion, that's why there's bike racks for cars. You know, a big thing that states are trying to push is share the road for cyclists. I feel if they abide by, you know, the laws, that's pretty fair, you know? I'm just not really for it, you know, especially just moving and then finding out that they're going to take 10 feet. To me, that's a big deal. I do know that right in front of the house, there's signs for gas lines too, so if the gas lines have to be relocated, I'm not sure. Wintertime, am I going to be in charge for clearing out a 10-foot path in front of my house? And just some concerns that I have, so that's all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mark Munt, 800 Bo's Road, as a taxpayer, not as a contractor to the city. I'm going to bounce around a little bit, but my neighbor mentioned a little bit about it, but we've been kind of, we try to keep our properties up on Bo's Road. I mentioned that last time I was here, and we've got some really nice-looking homes along there. But Bo's Road has been the recipient of many failed experiments over the years. One of them, you mentioned, cutting 150 trees down. We tried to keep our places nice and come through and cut all the stuff down. The next experiment was putting the substation down at the other end of Bo's Road and deciding we needed power lines down both sides of the road because Lowell Light and Power was too cheap to bury it. Again, it looks like an industrial park. It's a residential area. Failed experiment. One of the board members, I believe, resigned because he was so embarrassed about how bad that looked when they got it done. They stopped doing the clearcutting after they went down Bo's Road because that was decided it wasn't a good idea either. Now we're going to put a 10-foot wide piece of driveway down to everybody's front yard for people to walk on. Another failed experiment. We don't know if people are going to come and use these trails. There are studies that say they might. I don't know that. I'm not a trail person though, so I don't have any sympathy for that. We already have sidewalk that goes from one end of Bo's Road to the other. It's perfectly good sidewalk. Some of it was paid for through private people. In other words, they paid for it themselves, and you're going to come through and tear it up and replace it with blacktop, which you can't put a blacktop sidewalk in this city, I don't believe. And I know this isn't the sidewalk. It's trail, but I don't think you can put a blacktop sidewalk in this city, but you're asking us to replace a cement sidewalk with blacktop. Right away, I was told that if it wasn't for those power poles and they didn't need an easement from us, they just put it in anyway. Well, that might be true in theory, but I'm here to ask you as our representatives to make sure they don't come through and decimate our front yards like this. You have the right to stop this. Dave said you're going to be asked to authorize the resolution for them to go for grant. You can vote no. It's okay. It does not have to be 10-foot wide. The reason it needs to be 10-foot wide according to them, which is true, is because of the grants they're applying for. If they weren't applying for those grants, you can put any trail in that you want. Cascade does not have 10-foot wide trails or Wattpad because they paid for them themselves. They chose as a community to vote a bond issue and to put those in, and they get to set their own rules when they do it that way. So don't fall for everything you hear. Some of this is half-baked, let's say. It sounds good, but there might be a little bit more truth there if you pare it in a little bit and ask the right questions. That is all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Ryan Sullivan. I live at 890 Bo's Road. My wife and I and two small children just moved in at the end of September of this year. I can say that we moved to this community because it was a nice, small community with nice neighborhoods where we felt our children could have plenty of property and land in that front yard to move about, where we could grow into and be a part of the neighborhood. I can tell you if that trail was in front of our house before we bought the property, we would not have bought it. I think that it encroaches on everybody's driveways, people's parking scenarios. There isn't any parking on Bo's Road, so if I was to have a family gathering and I have four cars in my driveway, now I'm blocking the trail, and it's going to be all that way, all down Bo's Road and in people's properties. I think it increases the traffic level down Bo's Road with the stoplight, which, as others have mentioned, is already traffic that moves very quickly. I would actually love to see stop sign, more stop signs on Bo's Road, actually right at my corner of Center and Bo's. Something prevent more speeding. I do agree that I think there's better ways for committees' time to be spent within the community, finding projects that the community can gather around versus possibly, you know, potential use for people using these trails that we don't really know. I can say the short time that I've been there, we have a very nice sidewalk, as others have mentioned, that runs all the way down Bo's, and really only sees traffic usage from a small handful of neighbors that use it on a daily basis. Maybe a few children going to Stony Lakeside Park. My wife and I will be opposed to the trail, and I hope that you can see concerned citizens here tonight opposing it and understand people's concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cliff Yankovic, 329 Monroe. I also own a business on Main Street, and that's the main reason I'm here to support the connecting of the trails. Up until today, I was not aware of the problems with running in front of people's yards, and I certainly respect that. Hopefully, we can get something worked out. The reason, I think it would be important to connect all these dots. I know there's no way to prove the trails would get used, but all you have to do is go up to Rockford on a Saturday or Sunday and take a look at what goes on there. Bikes, walkers, all kinds of people up and down. Their trails get used. Something that rang my bell when we had the chamber dinner a couple weeks ago was that if this is, if all of these pieces are put together, it'd be the fifth-largest trail system in the country, and Lowell's kind of right in the middle of it. And then you put in the fact that we're the home for the North Country Trails National Office, and I've said here in the past that I would like to see a campground go in. Jim Hall's name was mentioned earlier. I think that's a genius idea for when the fair moves. Liz Baker gets calls off- Liz Baker gets calls all the time, people looking for campgrounds, and to me, it makes every bit of common sense to have a place where people can camp, and the trails would tie it all together nicely. So I'm hoping that you guys or Laura can find a way to accommodate everybody's concerns and still get all these dots connected. Thanks.
Thanks, Cliff.
Hi. My name is Chantel. I live at 976 Bowes, so I would be right at the corner where it would come up my side yard and across the front yard, so right along my two children's windows and along the side of our house, taking up hundreds of square feet of my property. I only just bought the house this summer. I was very excited, much like my new neighbors, to be part of a small community, a thriving community, safe, friendly. And the thought of this trail, yes, I like the idea of a trail and connecting things, but we have that, we have a sidewalk. We have places for people to come and go. And I can't imagine the lack of privacy that we'll now have with a 10-foot-wide trail in our own personal yard, running next to my children's bedroom doors. I can't imagine people being out there in the middle of the night, all hours, doing whatever they want. The litter, people throwing stuff all over our properties that we'll now have to go out and clean up. Now, we can put our trust in the city that they are going to maintain it, and it will be shoveled and it will be cleared, but what about, what about our land? That entire section of my property down the yard, that's my privacy. Like, I have all my trees there. The privacy is the reason that I purchased the house. If I would have known this, coming to buy this house and becoming part of a great community, great schools and great people, I mean, I would have never bought that house. And I can't imagine in years to come, when we turn around and want to sell it, other people wanting to purchase our home. I have spent the entire summer fixing the inside of the house. I've had to put time with my children aside so that I can invest in this home and make it better for the city of Lowell. And it's just so disappointing, especially the fact that nobody reached out to me, a homeowner, that's affected by this. Never once did I hear about it until my neighbors came knocking on my door last Tuesday and said, "Hey, did you hear about this?" No. And I mean, the people who are affected most should be the people that are heard from first. And if my neighbor didn't come down and knock it on my door, I would have never known. She probably wouldn't have known until they were tearing stuff out of her front yard. 10 feet is a very large amount of space across, and I think I read somewhere as well that there's an extra two-foot shoulder or something along the lines of that, alongside of it, too. My front yard is gone. My neighbors' front yards are gone. So now my children go out to play, and we're supposed to expect that on our property, our children are allowed to play and be safe and comfortable in our home, on our property. But there's going to be so many people running through it. I definitely don't support this, and I'm extremely disappointed. If it was something smaller, something that didn't tear up everybody's everything, then maybe. But, I mean, it's astronomical and the price that it's going to cost to build it when there's perfectly good existing pathways.
Chantel, can you please provide your last name for me for the minutes? Kyper. Thank you.
Anybody else on the trail?
Betsy Davidson, Lowell Area Recreation Authority Board member. Our board and the Fred Meyer River Valley Rail Trail Group has been working, and many community leaders have been working on this rail trail connection project for over 10 The map submitted is our preferred route option, which touches many city parks and other city features. And by deciding to allow us to move forward and submit these grants is not forcing the trail on anyone along Bowes Road. We will have until October to work with property owners along Bowes Road and give them the facts about the rail trail and how we can work together with them, making improvements to their property where the trail goes through. There's a bigger picture here than just Lowell, it's regional, and the trail will be available for generations to come. And the route is our best chance to get funding from the state. So we're hoping that the residents here tonight can read the facts that we've put together, and hopefully they'll allow us to talk to them, you know, moving forward and figure out a plan for each property owner. So that's our goal and intent. I apologize if we didn't contact you directly yet, but we will be. Our plan was to contact, we have to contact each property owner, so thank you.
Mayor DeLore, I also have a letter to you. Dear Council, just wanted to let you know that we at Main Street in fully support the completion of the trail system through Lowell. Over the last five years, we have watched this community blossom and grow and are excited to see safe and healthy activities continue to increase things for visitors to do here in Lowell. Please do what you can to see that this happens. Heather Straight, manager.
Thank you. If there's nobody else, we will move on to item B. Showboat Engineering Services, Rich.
Thank you. As part of the rebuilding of the showboat project, it's necessary to enlist the services of a qualified firm to design and engineer the new structure and also provide a set of plan specifications permitting the construction of the vessel. As directed by the showboat working group, the city's owner's representative, Chris Chamberlain, solicited quotes for professional services from a number of engineering firms qualified in engineering and design of maritime vessels. Mr. Chamberlain received four quotes total, and the showboat working group recommended the selection of Sea Fly Marine Services of Madisonville, Louisiana. The quoted cost for the structural design and engineering and production engineering services is $70,000, plus additional costs for any regulatory fees, travel, construction engineering, and inspection and project management if we request it. Mr. Chamberlain has evaluated the firm's references, and they are highly recommended. Engineering and design of the new showboat will begin immediately upon execution of the contract and receiving a written notice to proceed. Funds for this project have been allocated from the $1 million grant award from the state of Michigan specifically for the rebuilding of the showboat, and I recommend city council accept Sea Fly Marine Services bid of $70,000 for the engineering and design of the new Lowell showboat, plus additional expenses as requested by the city, and subject to the approval and finalization, excuse me, finalized legal agreement between the city and Sea Fly Marine. That will be reviewed and approved by the city manager and city attorney.
Thanks, Rich. Any discussion on a motion to accept Sea Fly Marine Services bid?
I just had a question, and I'm new with the laptops that we're using here, but I didn't see the other bids in there at all.
Yeah, I did not put them in. I should have put them in, but we can get those for you.
Yeah, what were the other?
I believe they went as high as $115,000, and then I think we had one that was slightly lower than this, but we opted for a Sea Fly because of their qualifications.
Okay. I just wanted to ask that question. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for asking that.
I make a motion to accept Sea Fly Marine Services bid of $70,000 for engineering and design of the new Lowell showboat, plus additional expenses as requested by the city, and subject to final approval of a finalized legal agreement between the city and Sea Fly Marine LLC that will be reviewed and approved by the city manager and city attorney.
I'll second.
Discussion on it. Sue.
Councilmember Salzweidel Zapsen, councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
And Mayor DeLore.
Yes. All right. Item C is a LARA trail maintenance memorandum. Michael.
Yes. At the December 4th, 2017, city council meeting, the city council attracted the city manager to work with the Lowell Area Recreation Authority and Lowell Area Schools to develop a memorandum of understanding to meet train the trail. As you recall, with trail system expanding and the addition of the Alton Nash section and more plans are developed for new trails, the city is not in a position to continue to support routine maintenance of a non-city-owned asset. The Department of Public Works proposes to return routine trail maintenance activities back to LARA and further proposes to formalize division of responsibility of trails and routine maintenance activities with the attached memorandum of understanding. Basically, there's an attachment in your map, and basically, LARA will be maintaining the current trail and the additional trail if that comes into place in the future. Lowell Area Schools will be maintaining the areas around the school district, around the high school and Foreman Street, and the city will be responsible for, at this time, for Stony Lakeside Park. And I'm recommending that the city, the routine maintenance activities would encompass items such as snow removal, tree and brush trimming, mowing, replacement of defective sections, seal coating, tree and brush removal, surface patching, mitigating trail hazards. And I recommend that the Lowell City Council approve the memorandum of understanding between LARA, Lowell Area Schools, and the city of Lowell regarding maintenance of the Lowell Area Recreation Authority trails presented.
With that, do we, how much, what's the average that they put into those trails on a year? Do you have any idea?
Dave, can you answer that?
Let me ask the treasurer.
So right now, each municipality gives $2,000 to our operations maintenance fund. So right now, we're not spending, obviously, even nearly that much, but we will be spending more as we continue to grow the trails. So right now, that $6,000 covers our operations budget, and we take a portion of that for maintenance, so maybe less than $1,000. And then in 2011, or 2015, we sealed, 2016, we seal-toed the trails. So we bank some of that money we have into maintenance so we can afford to maintain the trails on that level with new seal coating and sealing cracks and things like that.
And part of the benefit of getting the 10-foot-wide trail down Bowes Road, if we can find a route that works for the homeowners down there, then, if I'm correct, is that then the friends of the Frederick Meyer Valley will help with maintenance if it's wide enough and safe enough. So that's part of our reason in doing the wider trail, if we can find a way that will work for the property owners along there.
Okay. With that, I'll make the motion that the Lowell City Council approve the memorandum for understanding between the Lowell Area Recreation Authority, Lowell Area Schools, the city of Lowell regarding maintenance of the Lowell Area Recreation Authority trail that's presented.
I'll support.
Discussion on it. Sue.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeLore.
Yes.
And Councilmember Salzweidel Zapsen.
All right. Item D is the Greater Grand Rapids Hazardous Mitigation Plan.
In order for the city of Lowell to be eligible for any potential FEMA funds, an adopted hazardous mitigation plan is required as a condition of future funding for mitigation projects under multiple FEMA and pre- and post-disaster mitigation grant programs. Plan is updated every five years. I gave you a copy of the plan, it was about 340 pages, it was in your shared file. Michigan State Police Emergency Management Division and the Federal Emergency Management Agency reaching five officials have approved the updated hazardous mitigation plan, and the Kent County Board of Commissioners approved the official adoption. Every jurisdiction in Kent County needs to approve the plan, updated plan, to be eligible for funds, and I have attached a necessary resolution for that action to occur, and I'm recommending that the Lowell City Council approve Resolution 718 as presented. In essence, we learned about this during the floods, and we never approved this, so we need to approve this.
And it's the same for every municipality that approves it, right?
In Kent County, yes.
Kent County, you'd be eligible, has to have everybody on it.
Correct.
With that, I'll recommend that the Lowell City Council approve Resolution 718 as presented.
I'll second.
Discussion on it. Sue.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeLore.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweidel Zapsen and Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
I don't read, well, your Board of Commissioners, George Jeffrey.
I don't have anything. The last meeting was canceled.
Great.
Nothing since the last meeting.
I have nothing.
I don't either. The fire authority for March was canceled. We'll meet again April 9th at 3:30. DDA was rescheduled for noon on the 15th of March, and the Vision Alliance meeting was canceled and rescheduled for March 20th at 4:00. So that makes it your turn, Mr. Brown. City manager, report.
Okay. Just an update on the flooding. And Friday, we ended our bypass pumping, I'm sorry, on Thursday, we ended our bypass pumping, where we were pumping, we had to pump sanitary and storm sewage into the river, and we've notified the Department of Environmental Quality and the Kent County Health Department. We're following all provisions required in the state law when we have those actions to do. This occurred in 2013, when the flooding occurred, and basically what it does is it helps relieve the wastewater treatment plant because there's so much water coming in. The plant isn't designed to take that much water in, so by that, by that action, it did help alleviate sewer, any additional sewer backups that we may have had. We didn't have, but we were able to do that. Also, at this time, the governor has not declared a state of emergency at this time. I'm not sure if he is. My conversation with Kent County Emergency Management last week was, it was still kind of up in the air as to what was going to happen, so we're waiting to hear. At our last meeting, our last council meeting, there was some concern regarding Broadway Street, and I asked Pryor Newhoff to come to our March 19th meeting to discuss with the council again that the proposed closure of Broadway. Just so everyone is aware, Broadway construction is going to begin on March 12th, towards the south end of the project towards Broadway. They're going to start beginning the water main work at that point, at that time. We'll be meeting later in the week with Kay and I and Pryor Newhoff to put more, to put the plant, the timetable in place. I'm pleased to announce that the city has hired a new deputy clerk. Her name is Amy Brown. She currently comes from Granton Township. She was a deputy clerk there, and she'll be starting with us on March 19th. We have some really good candidates for the position, and Amy stood above all of them, and we're looking forward to her coming aboard and working for us. The Wayfinding Project is moving along. We do have a concept for a sign that we, that we're going to consider, that we'd like to, eventually we're going to come to council with. This is the grant funding we received about five years ago that we, we, kind of, of an essence, we need to have the project completed by the end of the summer, so we're working towards that as well. We did have to change the date with Lou Bamber. We will be here on Wednesday, March 28th, be at the fire station. Our time will be at 5:00 PM, and generally provided. Reminder that the budget session is April 28th, Saturday, from beginning at 10:00 AM, and Dan Burton will be here on May 15th, International Walkability Expert.
The light and power, the budget meeting.
I haven't confirmed that by all certainty. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Nothing for appointments. Moses on item 10. Council comments, Jeffrey.
I'd like to thank everybody, Rich, chief, all departments and staff for their hard work and dedication during the flood, and all the time you guys seem to do really well and work well together, so thanks for all the hard work and dedication. And I'd like to thank all the citizens for coming out and expressing your concerns to us. I'm glad you came out and did that, and everybody have a great week.
Thank you. Greg.
Same thing. Thanks to the DPW and Police Department, everyone who helped with the flood. It was, we kind of had a dress rehearsal a few years ago, so I think things went very well. We knew what was going to happen and when, and done very well, but as little damage as possible. I think the National Weather Service misled us a little bit in their moderate prediction because it was more than moderate, it was severe, but it fell just below the threshold to call it severe. But fortunately, DPW and Police Department were ready for that and handled it well.